We'd like to call this meeting of your Newark City Council order. Autumn is called in.
Mr. Bub?
Here.
Mr. Cos?
Here.
Mr. Fennell?
Here.
Mr. Frazier?
President.
Ms. Hall?
Here.
Mr. Labutus?
Here.
Mr. Lang?
Here.
Mr. Marmy?
President.
Mr. Raff?
Here.
And Mr. Blake?
Here.
We have all here this evening. If you please rise for the invocation by Mr. Blake, followed by his line of address.
Read by your heads. Dear Lord, we welcome you in this space. We welcome you in this time of joy, this time of holiday, this time of being with loved ones, family and friends, but let's also think of those that are less fortunate, less fortunate in our city, those that we wish to uplift in your arms, in your name, to become better, to become a part of us, and to become well. We thank you for all the blessings that you've given us, and we thank you for all that you plan to do for us, in this your name we say. Amen.
Amen. Please join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next on the agenda tonight, we have caucus. That's the time for council to discuss anything pertaining to the agenda tonight. Do we have anything? We are going to be using Rule 11 on 1897, 1898, and 1896. The reason we're using Rule 11 is because these ordinances or resolutions have a time crunch on them, so the minority and majority leader have agreed to go ahead and waive the reading and hear those this evening, so we'll be doing those in this length. Next on the agenda, we have the minutes from our November 19, 2018 meeting. Do we have a motion to approve those? Motion by Mr. Labutus?
Second.
Second by Mr. Frazier. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close at the same time. Next on the agenda, we have reports of standing committees, one from finance, one from service. Without objection, those will be received and filed. For the reports from city officials, we have one from Stephen Johnson, our auditor, one from Barb Jodes, our city -- sorry, two from Barb Jodes, our city tax administrator. Without objection, those will be received and filed. Also under communications, we have two this evening, one from Andrew Christensen, discussing a parking problem that we've referred to Mr. Rhodes, and one from Licking Memorial Hospital. Without objection, that'll be received and filed. Tonight, we have three public hearings. 1828 and 1829 are kind of the same type of thing, are two different properties that are adjoining. I'm going to have Autumn read both of those. We're going to open a public hearing, and that'll be after that, it'll be the time for your comments. So Autumn, if you'll read 1828 and 1829.
A notice of hearing, notice is here given that the Newark City Council shall at a later date, to be determined and announced hereafter, take action upon ordinance number 1828 and ordinance number 1829. Said ordinances allow the changing of the zoning classification of certain real property generally described as 1621 North 21st Street and 158 Myrtle Avenue, City of Newark, Ohio, Licking County. The planning commission did not recommend a change in the zoning establishment for 1621 North 21st Street. The parcel is currently zoned GO, General Office. The owner applicant requested a change to GB, General Business. The planning commission did however recommend a change for 158 Myrtle Avenue from the RM Single Family Medium Density District to GO, General Office District. Ordinance 18-28 by Mr. Raff, Mr. Marmy, Mr. Lang, and ordinance changing the zoning classification of certain real property generally described as 1621 North 21st Street, City of Newark, Licking County, Ohio, from that of GO, General Office, Zoning District to GC, General Commercial District.
Ordinance 1829 by Mr. Raff, Mr. Marmy, and Mr. Lang, and ordinance changing the
zoning classification of certain real property generally described as 158 Myrtle Avenue, City of Newark, Licking County, Ohio, from that of Single Family Residence Medium Density Zoning District to GC, General Commercial Zoning District.
Okay, this public hearing is open. This is time for any comments. Do we have any comments for or against these two issues? Again, you've heard the red, you've heard the planning commission's recommendation. Do you have any comments, sir? If you'd like to go up, step up and just give us your name and address for the record, please.
All righty. Bob Clockner, 289 Myrtle Avenue. We are extremely happy with the vote of the planning commission. We hope that you will take that vote into serious consideration when you vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else would like to speak for or against? Ma'am?
Virginia Beach, 162 Myrtle Avenue. We want to express our support for the planning commission's recommendation. It was a result of their working together for a resolution that supports a limited intrusion of a business into a residential area. We encourage all of you to respect their work and follow their recommendations. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else would like to speak for or against? One more time, anyone for or against? Okay, we're going to go ahead and close the public hearing. Autumn, let's read 1828 for the second reading.
Ordinance 18-28 by Mr. Raff, Mr. Marmy, Mr. Lang, and ordinance changing the zoning classification of certain real property generally described as 1621 North 21st Street, City of Newark, Licking County, Ohio, from that of GO, General Office Zoning District to GC, General Commercial Zoning District.
And again, the planning commission recommended no change in zoning, leaving it GO. So you've heard the second reading of 18-28. What is your wish?
Mr. President.
Mr. Raff?
Make a motion to adopt 18-28.
Motion by Mr. Raff.
Second.
Second by Mr. Frazier. Is there any discussion on 18-28?
Mr. President.
Mr. Raff?
Based on the zoning commission -- or planning commission's recommendation, I'll be voting against this, and I encourage everybody else to as well.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear the end of that.
Based on the planning commission's recommendation, I will be voting no on this.
Thank you, Mr. Raff.
Would recommend, and voting else too as well.
Thank you. Anyone else? Mr. Frazier?
Yeah, so, listening to the planning commission's recommendation, as well as property owner, as well as the residents, I'm going to support the General Office District designation because it's in both parties' wishes, as well as, although I see 21st Street becoming a business district, general business district. It might be an overtime process, and this just might be a step in the right direction, and my biggest reservation was on the general commercial designation that originally came forward, and so I do not oppose the General Office designation, or the corresponding General Office designation.
Thank you, Mr. Frazier. Ms. Cos?
I'd like to extend my support to the planning commission decision as well. I think what the planning commission did was find a compromise that will work well for everyone involved. The gentleman with the two pieces of property talked about expanding the school. He'll be allowed to expand the school. I know the neighbors in that area welcomed the school and the expansion of the school as opposed to a commercial business. They want to keep the residential neighborhood as it is. I think it's a good compromise that serves everybody involved, and I would support the planning commission as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cos. Anyone else? Mr. Raff?
Just a point of clarification, make sure we're all on the same page. 1828, what we're voting on now is currently General Office, and the vote is to change it to GC, General Commercial Zoning.
That's right.
So it's currently General Office now. Vote no, and keep it as General Office.
Correct. Yes, it would take seven votes to overturn the planning commission and make this -- seven yeses would make this general commercial. So to leave it General Office is the way the planning commission suggested we would want to vote no. Anyone else?
Mr. President.
Mr. Marmy.
So the property owner has changed his mind? Is that what happened, or is it just he's willing to go along with the recommendation? Is he still wanting general commercial?
I don't have the answer to that. Mr. Marmy, does anyone up here?
During the planning commission's public hearing, he asked for it to be general business because he said that the person who applied for him applied wrong for GC, but he wanted GB, but the planning commission recommended the GO. They went against what he requested.
Okay. I could have Mr. Rhodes speak to that if he was out there.
So they applied for the GC, not the GO, and he thought originally it was going to be the GO?
He thought originally it was going to be GB instead of GC, and then --
He got the GO. He kept the GO as a current vote.
Yeah, they just wanted it to remain the same, even though he then asked for a lesser zoning of GB at the public hearing.
All right. Anyone else? Autumn, just call the whole vote.
Mr. Bub?
No.
Mr. Cos?
No.
Mr. Fennell?
No.
Mr. Frazier?
No.
Ms. Hall?
No.
Mr. Labutus?
No.
Mr. Lang?
No.
Mr. Marmy?
No.
Mr. Raff?
No.
Mr. Blake?
No.
So 1828 fails 10-0, and 1828 then will remain GO. Okay, let's go on to 18-29.
Ordinance 18-29 by Mr. Raff, Mr. Marmy, Mr. Lang, and ordinance changing the zoning classification of certain real property generally described as 158 Myrtle Avenue, City of Newark, Licking County, Ohio, from that of Single Family Residence Medium Density Zoning District to GC, General Commercial Zoning District.
You've heard the second reading of 18-29. What is your wish?
Mr. President?
Mr. Raff?
I'd like to make a motion to adopt 18-29.
Motion by Mr. Raff, second by Mr. Frazier. Again, the planning commission recommended this property be changed to GO from residential and not to GC.
Mr. President?
Mr. Raff?
I'd like to make a motion to amend 1829 to 1829-A, which is in our packet, which would change the zoning classification from residence medium density zoning district to GO, General Office Zoning District.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Frazier. So, motion by Mr. Raff to amend 18-29 to 18-29-A, which would amend it, will change it from general -- or change it from residential to general office, which is what the planning commission suggested. Is there any discussion on the amendment?
Mr. President?
Mr. Raff?
Based on the planning's commission -- or planning commission's recommendation, I'll be supporting this one.
Thank you, Mr. Raff. Anyone else? Mr. Frazier?
I am in support of 1829-A. This does allow for the additional opportunities for the property owner. It is a step in the right direction, and it also takes into consideration residential property and the usage of that street as a order to both business and residential areas.
Thank you, Mr. Frazier. Anyone else? Autumn, please call the whole to vote to amend 18-29 to 18-29-A.
Mr. Bub?
Yes.
Mr. Cos?
Yes.
Mr. Fennell?
Yes.
Mr. Frazier?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Labutus?
Yes.
Mr. Lang?
Yes.
Mr. Marmy?
Yes.
Mr. Raff?
Yes.
And Mr. Blake?
Yes.
18-29-A has been amended. Is there any discussion on 18-29-A as amended? Autumn, please call the whole vote.
Mr. Bub?
Yes.
Mr. Cos?
Yes.
Mr. Fennell?
Yes.
Mr. Frazier?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Labutus?
Yes.
Mr. Lang?
Yes.
Mr. Marmy?
Yes.
Mr. Raff?
Yes.
And Mr. Blake?
Yes.
18-29-A passes 10-0, so 18-29-A means the property on Myrtle will go to General Office. Okay. All right. Next, we have another public hearing, 18-96. We're going to open the public hearing. Autumn, would you please read 18-96?
Notice of hearing is given that the Newark City Council shall at a later date, to be determined and announced hereafter, take action upon resolution number 18-96. Said resolution approves the renewal application for placement of farmland in agricultural district.
We're going to open this public hearing on 18-96. Is there anyone here to speak for or against 18-96? Again, this is basically something we have to do, I think, by statute every two years. This happens to be foreign property that's in the city. Anyone else here to speak for or against this one? Okay, we're going to go ahead and close the public hearing, and then we'll take up 18-96 in miscellaneous using Rule 11. What are you going to do? It's your choice. Why don't we just go ahead and do it now and get it over with? Autumn, would you read 18-96? Most more force, please, now that we've closed the public hearing.
Resolution 18-96 by Mr. Raff, Mr. Marmy, Mr. Cos, Mr. Frazier. A resolution approving the renewal application for placement of farmland in agricultural district and declaring an emergency.
You've heard the reading of 18-96. It is an emergency. What is your wish?
Mr. President?
Mr. Raff?
Make a motion to adopt 18-96.
Motion by Mr. Raff, second by Mr. Frazier. Is there any discussion on 18-96?
Point of order.
Mr. Marmy?
Please make the record, be known that the majority and the minority leader invoked Rule 11 and agreed on the Rule 11.
Thank you. I thought I said that before. I know, sir, but maybe I didn't. Again, we're using Rule 11 because it didn't go to committee, then my majority and minority leader have agreed to hear this. Anything else?
Mr. President?
Mr. Raff?
This is an emergency, but it is declared an emergency due to a timeline issue. I encourage you to support it.
Thank you, Mr. Raff. Anyone else? Autumn, please call the whole vote.
Mr. Bub?
Yes.
Mr. Cos?
Yes.
Mr. Fennell?
Yes.
Mr. Frazier?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Labutus?
Yes.
Mr. Lang?
Yes.
Mr. Marmy?
Yes.
Mr. Raff?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
18-96 passes 10-0. I'm not sure we've had three public hearings in one evening, so it'd be a record. Okay. Next, we have comments from citizens. This is your time to be heard this evening. This is not a debate with council. This is just your opportunity. Do we have anyone for this first section of comments from citizens? If you do, please raise your hand, and I'll have you come up. We'll move on to ordinances on the second reading, 18-35.
Ordinance 18-35 by Mr. Cos, Mr. Labutus, Mr. Frazier, Mr. Marmy, Mr. Raff, and Mr. Lang, and ordinance amending the position classification, pay range, and department authorization tables of the City of Newark Division of Water and Wastewater by creating the classifications of project engineer and environmental systems technician within the division and setting the compensation therefore, and establishing all other positions within the division.
You've heard the second reading of 18-35. What is your wish?
Mr. President?
Mr. Bub?
I'll move that we adopt ordinance 18-35.
Motion to adopt by Mr. Bub?
Second.
Second by Mr. Frazier. Do we have any discussion on 18-35? Seeing none, Autumn, please call the whole vote.
Mr. Bub?
Yes.
Mr. Cos?
Yes.
Mr. Fennell?
Yes.
Mr. Frazier?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Labutus?
Yes.
Mr. Lang?
Yes.
Mr. Marmy?
Yes.
Mr. Raff?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
18-35 passes 10-0. Next, on the second reading, we have 18-36.
Ordinance 18-36 by Mr. Cos, Mr. Frazier, Mr. Marmy, Mr. Lang, Mr. Labutus, and Mr. Raff, and ordinance amending the base wage and salary table of the City of Newark for the position of street and traffic engineer with a strength of authorization of one in the Division of Engineering.
You've heard the second reading of 18-36. What is your wish?
Mr. President?
Mr. Bub?
I'll move that we adopt 18-36.
Motion to adopt by Mr. Bub?
Second.
Second by Mr. Frazier. Is there any discussion on 18-36? Seeing none, Autumn, please call the whole vote.
Mr. Bub?
Yes.
Mr. Cos?
Yes.
Mr. Fennell?
Yes.
Mr. Frazier?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Labutus?
Yes.
Mr. Lang?
Yes.
Mr. Marmy?
Yes.
Mr. Raff?
Yes.
And Mr. Blake?
Yes.
18-37 passes 10-0. Next, on the second reading, we have 18-37.
Ordinance 18-37 by Mr. Cos, Mr. Marmy, Mr. Labutus, Mr. Frazier, Mr. Raff, and Mr. Lang, and ordinance amending the position classification, pay range, and department authorization tables of the City of Newark Department of Public Safety Division of Property Maintenance by creating the classification of public maintenance code official rehab specialist supervisor and setting the compensation therefore.
You've heard the second reading of 18-37. What is your wish?
Mr. President?
Mr. Bub?
I'll move that we adopt 18-37.
Motion to adopt by Mr. Bub?
Second.
Second by Mr. Frazier. Is there any discussion on 18-37? Seeing none, Autumn, please call the whole vote.
Mr. Bub?
Yes.
Mr. Cos?
Yes.
Mr. Fennell?
Yes.
Mr. Frazier?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Labutus?
Yes.
Mr. Lang?
Yes.
Mr. Marmy?
Yes.
Mr. Raff?
Yes.
And Mr. Blake?
Yes.
18-37 passes 10-0. And finally, on the second reading, we have 18-38.
Ordinance 18-38 by Mr. Raff, Mr. Cos, Mr. Marmy, Mr. Frazier, Mr. Labutus, and Mr. Lang, and ordinance amending the pay range and department authorization tables of the Department of Economy and Community Development for the position of code enforcer rehab specialist and setting compensation therefore.
And once again, you've heard the second reading of 18-38. What is your wish?
Mr. President?
Mr. Bub?
I'll move that we adopt 18-38.
Motion to adopt by Mr. Bub?
Second.
Second by Mr. Frazier. Is there any discussion on 18-38? Seeing none, Autumn, please call the whole vote.
Mr. Bub?
Yes.
Mr. Cos?
Yes.
Mr. Fennell?
Yes.
Mr. Frazier?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Labutus?
Yes.
Mr. Lang?
Yes.
Mr. Marmy?
Yes.
Mr. Raff?
Yes.
And Mr. Blake?
Yes.
18-38 passes 10-0. Now, we'll move on to ordinances on the first reading, 18-39.
Ordinance 18-39 by Mr. Marmy, Mr. Raff, Mr. Cos, Mr. Lang, and Mr. Frazier. It's an ordinance to provide for the issuance of not to exceed $2 million of bond anticipation notes in anticipation of the issuance of bonds for the purpose of paying the cost of Buckeye Corridor storm water plans, sewer improvements, and all necessary appurtenances thereto, and declaring an emergency.
18-39 is on the first reading, but it is an emergency. What is your wish?
Mr. President?
Mr. Marmy?
Make a motion to adopt ordinance 18-39.
Motion to adopt by Mr. Marmy?
Second.
Second by Mr. Frazier. Is there any discussion on 18-39? Seeing none, Autumn, please call the whole vote.
Mr. Bub?
Yes.
Mr. Cos?
Yes.
Mr. Fennell?
Yes.
Mr. Frazier?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Labutus?
Yes.
Mr. Lang?
Yes.
Mr. Marmy?
Yes.
Mr. Raff?
Yes.
And Mr. Blake?
Yes.
18-39 passes 10-0. Next, on the first reading, we have 18-40.
Resolution 18-41 by Mr. Raff, Mr. Marmy, Mr. Cos, Mr. Labutus, Mr. Lang, Mr. Frazier, and ordinance changing the zoning classification of certain real property generally described as 1905 Monverne Road, City of Newark, Licking County, Ohio, from that of newly annexed property to MB, Medium Intensity Business District zoning code of the City of Newark, Ohio.
18-41 will be referred to the planning commission for their opinion. Next, we have 18-42.
Ordinance 18-42 by Mr. Raff, Mr. Marmy, Mr. Lang, Mr. Frazier, and ordinance changing the zoning classification of certain real property generally described as Zero Cherry Street, City of Newark, Licking County, Ohio, from that of RH, High Density Single Family Residence District, to MFR, Multi Family Residence District within, or excuse me, zoning code of the City of Newark, Ohio.
18-42 will also be referred to the planning commission. Both of those should be heard by the planning commission at our first meeting in January. Next, we have 18-43.
Ordinance 18-43 by Mr. Cos, Mr. Marmy, Mr. Raff, Mr. Lang, Mr. Frazier. It's an ordinance to provide for the issuance of not to exceed $1 million of bond anticipation notes in anticipation of the issuance of bonds for the purpose of paying the cost of water system improvements and all necessary appurtenances thereto, and declaring an emergency.
18-43 is on its first reading, but it is an emergency. What is your wish?
Mr. President?
Mr. Marmy?
I make a motion to adopt ordinance 18-43.
Motion to adopt by Mr. Marmy?
Second.[1385.87]
Second by Mr. Fraser. Is there any discussion on eighteen dash forty-three? I'll please call a roll of vote.
Mr. Bub?
Yes.
Mr. Cos?
Yes.
Mr. Fennell?
Yes.
Mr. Fraser?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Labutus?
Yes.
Mr. Lang?
Yes.
Mr. Marmee?
Yes.
Mr. Rath?
Yes.
And Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Eighteen dash forty-three passes ten zero. Now we'll move on to ordinances on the first reading, eighteen dash forty-four.
Ordinance eighteen dash forty-four by Mr. Cos, Mr. Marmee, Mr. Rath, Mr. Lang, Mr. Fraser, and ordinance consolidating two bond anticipation notes issuance of the city of Newark and declaring an emergency.
You've heard the first reading of eighteen dash forty-four. Once again, it is an emergency. What is your wish?
Mr. President.
Mr. Marmee?
Make a motion to adopt ordinance eighteen dash forty-four.
Motion by Mr. Marmee?
Second.
Second by Mr. Fraser. Is there any discussion on eighteen dash forty-four? Seeing none, I'll please call a roll of vote.
Mr. Bub?
Yes.
Mr. Cos?
Yes.
Mr. Fennell?
Yes.
Mr. Fraser?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Labutus?
Yes.
Mr. Lang?
Yes.
Mr. Marmee?
Yes.
Mr. Rath?
Yes.
And Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Eighteen dash forty-four passes ten zero. Next, we have resolutions on the second reading, eighteen dash eighty-seven.
Resolution eighteen dash eighty-seven by Mr. Cos, Mr. Marmee, Mr. Labutus, Mr. Rath, Mr. Fraser, Mr. Lang, a resolution appropriating monies for the current expenses of the municipal corporation.
You've heard your second reading of eighteen dash eighty-seven. What is your wish?
Mr. President.
Mr. Lang?
Let's make a motion to adopt resolution eighteen dash eighty-seven.
Motion by Mr. Lang to adopt.
Second.
Second by Mr. Fraser. Is there any discussion on eighteen dash eighty-seven? Seeing none, I'll please call a roll of vote.
Mr. Blake?
Yep.
Oh, excuse me, I'm sorry. Mr. Bub?
Yes.
Mr. Cos?
Yes.
Mr. Fennell?
Yes.
Mr. Fraser?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Labutus?
Yes.
Mr. Lang?
Yes.
Mr. Marmee?
Yes.
Mr. Rath?
Yes.
And Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Eighteen dash eighty-seven passes ten zero. Next, we have eighteen dash eighty-nine.
Resolution eighteen dash eighty-nine by Mr. Rath, Mr. Cos, Mr. Marmee, Mr. Labutus, Mr. Fraser, and Mr. Lang, a resolution authorizing and directing the Director of Public Service of the City of Newark, Ohio to apply for, accept, and enter into a water pollution control loan fund agreement on behalf of the City of Newark for planning, design, and/or construction of wastewater facilities for street separation project and designating a dedicated repayment source for the loan.
You've heard your second reading of eighteen dash eighty-nine. What is your wish?
Mr. President.
Mr. Rath?
Make a motion to adopt eighteen dash eighty-nine.
Motion to adopt by Mr. Rath?
Second.
Second by Mr. Cos. Did you say second? You did. Okay.
Okay. No, it's okay. I just thought you didn't know who I was.
We'll get back to that later. Is there any discussion on eighteen dash eighty-nine? Seeing none, I'll please call a roll of vote.
Mr. Bub?
Yes.
Mr. Cos?
Yes.
Mr. Fennell?
Yes.
Mr. Fraser?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Labutus?
Yes.
Mr. Lang?
Yes.
Mr. Marmee?
Yes.
Mr. Rath?
Yes.
And Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Eighteen dash eighty-nine passes ten zero. And one more on the second reading, eighteen dash nine.
Resolution eighteen dash ninety by Mr. Marmee, Mr. Labutus, Mr. Cos, Mr. Rath, Mr. Lang, and resolution appropriating monies for the current expenses of the municipal corporation.
Again, you've heard your second reading of eighteen dash ninety. What is your wish?
Mr. President.
Mr. Marmee?
I make a motion to adopt resolution eighteen dash ninety.
Motion by Mr. Marmee?
Second.
Second by Mr. Fraser. Is there any discussion on eighteen dash ninety? Seeing none, I'll please call a roll of vote.
Mr. Bub?
Yes.
Mr. Cos?
Yes.
Mr. Fennell?
Yes.
Mr. Fraser?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Labutus?
Yes.
Mr. Lang?
Yes.
Mr. Marmee?
Yes.
Mr. Rath?
Yes.
And Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Eighteen dash ninety passes ten zero. Now we move on to the agenda to resolutions on the first reading, eighteen dash ninety-two.
Resolution eighteen dash ninety-two by Mr. Marmee, Mr. Cos, Mr. Labutus, Mr. Rath, Mr. Lang, Mr. Fraser, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor of the City of Newark to prepare and submit applications to the Ohio Attorney General for the Ohio Law Enforcement Body Armor Program funding during 2019.
Eighteen dash ninety-two will be held for two weeks for a second reading. Next, we move on to eighteen dash ninety-three.
Resolution eighteen dash ninety-three by Mr. Marmee, Mr. Cos, Mr. Labutus, Mr. Rath, Mr. Lang, Mr. Fraser, a resolution appropriating monies for the current expenses of the municipal corporation.
Eighteen dash ninety-three.
Mr. President.
Mr. Marmee?
I make a motion to waive the two-day reading rule of resolution eighteen dash ninety-three.
Motion to waive the two-day reading.
Second.
By Mr. Marmee. Second by Mr. Fraser. Mr. Marmee?
Thank you, Mr. President. We're getting down to the end of the year as far as the budget, so therefore there are some funds that are a little bit short, so we have to put some money in there to make sure that we can conclude the year.
Thank you, Mr. Marmee. I'll please call a roll, waive the two-day reading rule.
Mr. Bub?
Yes.
Mr. Cos?
Yes.
Mr. Fennell?
Yes.
Mr. Fraser?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Labutus?
Yes.
Mr. Lang?
Yes.
Mr. Marmee?
Yes.
Mr. Rath?
Yes.
And Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Eighteen dash ninety-three passes ten zero. Next, we have eighteen dash ninety-three.
Resolution eighteen dash ninety-four by Mr. Marmee, Mr. Cos, Mr. Labutus, Mr. Rath, Mr. Lang, and Mr. Fraser, a resolution authorizing and directing the Director of Public Service of the City of Newark, Ohio to prepare and submit applications to the Ohio Attorney General for the Ohio Law Enforcement Body Armor Program funding during 2019.
Eighteen dash ninety-two will be held for two weeks for a second reading. Next, we move on to eighteen dash ninety-three.
Resolution eighteen dash ninety-three by Mr. Marmee, Mr. Cos, Mr. Labutus, Mr. Rath, Mr. Lang, and Mr. Fraser, a resolution appropriating monies for the current expenses of the municipal corporation.
Eighteen dash ninety-four will be held for two weeks for a second reading. And finally tonight, we have eighteen dash ninety-five.
Resolution eighteen dash ninety-five by Mr. Rath, Mr. Marmee, Mr. Cos, Mr. Labutus, Mr. Lang, Mr. Fraser, a resolution authorizing and directing the Director of Public Service to enter into a lease purchase agreement for the lease purchase of a new electronic scoreboard for the use at Don Edwards Park baseball facility.
And eighteen dash ninety-five will be held for two weeks for a second reading. And that concludes our legislation. Thank you for your attention. Next on the agenda, we have our second opportunity for comments from citizens. Again, the same rules apply. This is not a debate with council. This is just your opportunity to be heard. If you have the right to speak, please raise your hand. Yeah, I'll just come on up.
Virginia Beach, 162 Myrtle Avenue. I would just like to thank all of you for being considerate of the residents in the area and for voting the way the Planning Commission recommended. Thank you so much.
Thank you, ma'am.
Bob Clockner, 289 Myrtle Avenue. Thank you very much for your consideration of our resident residential area on Myrtle Avenue. Thank you.
Thanks, Bob. Anyone else? Mr. Green? Mr. Green, come on up.
David Green, 1791 Olympic Court. I wanted to ask a couple of things of the council. At this time of year, it's starting to get a lot colder, and so a lot of people are dealing with weather conditions that maybe some of you are not dealing with as directly. One of those issues is transportation and the importance of transportation. And I know that years ago, when people met around this issue, that council or the City of Newark gave some of their control and authority over the issue of transportation to county more fully in different ways. But I don't think this exempts the council from their responsibility as advocates for the citizens and residents of the city. That's a mechanical procedure. It has to do with funding. It has to do with a number of other questions. But I think to the credit of Mark Fraser, he introduced or proposed some changes in transportation in the county. And that's the role I see as possible role for people here on the council, to be advocates at all kinds of levels for transportation, so that it's not off your plate. I would encourage you to put that or keep that on your plate, because a lot of people are having to do without transportation at this time of year. And it's an extreme hardship for a significant part of the population. And unfortunately, because of economic conditions, I think it's going to be even a larger section of the population. Because minimum wage jobs, which there are plenty or bountiful low-wage jobs in the county in different areas, they also are jobs that require resources for family health benefits, same thing we all deal with, except their level of resources will be a lot lower because of minimum wage, part-time, temporary, and contingent labor. So that's one issue, and I want to encourage Mark and other council members to speak up. I know that Jeremy Blake has spoken up on this issue, and I would encourage all of you to do that, especially at this time of supposed goodwill to our brothers and sisters in whatever conditions. We're very quick to say we feel for other people, and we give to charity, and we do our due duty to help people out. It's a different issue to say we want to make the priorities of government to make sure that people have all of what they need in order to participate as fully as they can. So that's one issue. A second issue I'd encourage you to revisit, even though the city and the Department of Property Maintenance, Building Maintenance, has done some good work in terms of going after violations in housing. Several years ago, we, a number of people pushed for rental licensing and rental registration in the city. Housing, whether you call it such or not, or rentals, are a business. And in Newark, and not just Newark, but other places, they're taking up a larger section of the housing. More people are renting than buying. That's just the economic reality of today's world, and there are many reasons for that. But I would encourage you to revisit the question of rental registration or licensing in the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Green. Anyone from the city administration?
Arnold Aldrich.
Thank you, Mr. President. I will ultimately leave it to council to decide whether the change in the council's schedule has been a success or not. But I would like to note that for some of us here, the clerk, my office, it has presented some difficulties. But I wanted to make it clear that, especially tonight because of the nature of the agenda, we've been able to overcome those difficulties through the use of Rule 11. And I just want to thank Mr. Cos and Mr. Marmee for being so willing to use Rule 11. Even though it's somewhat confusing to the casual reader of the agenda, it does make the day-to-day working of Newark City Hall a lot easier, especially in light of the council changes in the schedule. And I think, of course, I would be remiss without ending with a hearty "Go Tigers."
Of course you would. Back to Mr. South.
I will pass this evening.
Thank you. And thank you, Mayor. Mr. Bub?
I'll pass.
Mr. Bub, Mr. Cos?
I'll pass.
Mr. Cos?
Mr. Fennell?
I'll pass.
Thank you. Mr. Fraser?
Mr. President, thank you for, Bob in Virginia, for coming and continuing to be outspoken on the issue. The greatest part of government is listening to the people, and it's hard to listen when their voices aren't presented. So thank you for your participation, continuing to advocate, continuing to call. David, I really didn't have a plan to speak on transportation, but since you brought it up, there is an absolute need for better transportation. And with the change that we're seeing on the county level of that coming in-house, the opportunity presents itself to improve the transportation systems that are underlying for the dispatching and the coordination, as well as providing more competitive salaries to get better drivers and better schedules in order to maintain those drivers as well. The hope is that eventually we'll move into a flex route transportation system with stop throughout the city to connect the grocery store, health services, residential areas, and honestly, working. And what we see is if we improve the infrastructure, the hope is that the usage goes up and the cost goes down. And so hopefully, by partnering with the Licking County Transit Board and the other organizations throughout our community, maybe we can provide that sooner rather than later.
And with that, I pass. Thank you, Mr. Gray. Ms. Hall?
Thank you, Ms. Hall.
Mr. Labutus? I will pass this evening. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Labutus. Mr. Lang?
Yeah, I had the opportunity last week to do a ride-along with Newark Police Department, and I just wanted to thank Officer Bill Evans. It was really eye-opening sitting in with him. I think he's one of our finest, just from my observation, a really class act. Watched him race towards a shots-fired report, take down a drug dealer by coordinating with code. It was just really impressive to watch him work. And I've sent my comments to Director Baum, and I hope that he appreciates, you know, the sentiment. I'd also like to mention Officer Purdy and Officer Arnt, who were working with Officer Evans a lot that night. The three of them are really, I don't know, I went home feeling a little safer with my family, so I was really happy to see those guys out there working and like to commend Director Baum and all the police department and all they do in the city. With that, I pass.
Thank you, Mr. Lang. Mr. Marmee?
Thank you, Mr. President. I need to call a finance committee meeting for December the 10th at 5:45. We will be reviewing the budget for the 2019 year, or we will actually be hearing the first presentation to the Finance Committee on that evening. Also need to call a Finance Committee meeting for December the 17th at the same time, 5:45. I just want to comment briefly on the schedule as far as what is happening. And I know that we've invoked Rule 11 at various times in order to make sure that things are running smoothly. Honestly, looking back though, 10 years ago, everything was last minute, and I think that we've greatly improved as far as what this council does in making sure that there's a transgression of time, and there's time in between for everybody to see everything and read everything from the clerk getting the agendas out on the Thursday prior. Honestly, like I said, 10 years ago, we were doing things Monday morning for a Monday evening meeting, and that's when we were getting the information. So it's greatly improved, and I'm just, I don't want to go back. So I'm very glad where we're at in the organization and how organized it is. With that, I pass.
Thank you, Mr. Marmee. Mr. Rath?
Thank you. I need to pull eighteen ninety-seven and eighteen ninety-eight up.
Autumn, you want to go ahead and read eighteen dash ninety-seven? And once again, this is using Rule 11, and Mr. Marmee and Mr. Cos have agreed. Autumn?
Resolution eighteen dash ninety-seven by Mr. Rath, Mr. Marmee, Mr. Cos, Mr. Labutus, Mr. Lang, Mr. Fraser, a resolution of intent to appropriate the real estate known as parcel